I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the roll, please. Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marasek.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
All right, and I think, I believe trustee Betzinger will be just a few minutes late this evening, but we do have a quorum. Move on to public participation. So the first item that we're doing, we'll do public comment last at the end of this. The first item we have this evening is a presentation of the memorial designs. And, go ahead.
Thank you, President Brawley. So I'd like to take this opportunity to invite Greg Sagan from Signature Design Group up to the podium to present the final designs for the memorials that will take place as part of the Montgomery Park Improvement Project. Wanted to also thank some of the stakeholders that are here that helped with the design of the, and worked on the memorials themselves, so we thank those people that have contributed to get us to this process and where we're at. So with that, I'd like to introduce Greg.
Thank you, Mark. Well, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I'm going to briefly update. I know you have a full agenda, so I'll be brief tonight. The two final granite memorials for Montgomery Park. As you recall, on September 12th, I presented to this board, I reviewed the overall scope for the entire Montgomery Park project, as well as including the Veterans Memorial and the Essential Workers Memorial. I shared with you the final design concepts, we talked about materials, massing, fabrication, and also at that time, we just had placeholder graphics. Now, since that presentation, Christina and the stakeholders worked hard, and they prepared the final graphics for the monuments, the memorials, as well as all the text to be included in that. We took then their final product, we had to tweak and massage the memorials a little bit as far as sizing, massing, to best present the message that Christina and her stakeholders wanted to present, and with that, we're going to share with you what those final memorials turned out to be. The first on your screen is the Montgomery Veterans Memorial. Now, both memorials you'll be looking at this evening are constructed out of black, or a dark gray granite, it's called gem mist. When polished, it has a very dark surface color to it, as you'll see conveyed, and then it can also be fabricated, honed, tooled, to provide a variety of finishes, textures, in a variety of gray colors. So that's what you'll see represented in some of the graphics we'll be showing you this evening. The Veterans Memorial is nine feet tall, the main tablet, which is the dark gray, is nine feet tall, angled top, four feet wide. This is flanked by two 10-inch wide shoulders, which are textured granite, we think of a very coarse corduroy kind of texture or tooling on either side, to frame and support, to emphasize the messages shown. This memorial is parallel to the pathway, so it's in a plaza, so there is a front and a backside to this memorial. The front side is on the right side of the screen, features the battlefield soldier at the top with the American flag. Montgomery Veterans Memorial in grave lettering within the memorial, in the monument in the center. All of the lettering is engraved, and will also be white highlighted, so it shows up throughout the weather, whether it's wet or dry, or depending on the light, or various light conditions. At the bottom of the memorial are the emblems from the six branches of services, that being the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, and the Space Guard. These medallions on the base memorial are engraved into the polished black granite, so it'll be a variety of gray and white colors to signify the emblems. We'll be looking at in just a minute, an option for these emblems, where we can utilize a colored ceramic emblem, which provides a little bit more pop to the face. Either way, the memorial would stand beautifully, and this is just an option we'll look at in a minute, so you know where these emblems are when we discuss it. The rear side of the memorial, which is the left side of your screen, features the same polished dark gray tablet in the center, but in this case, we used a two-and-a-half-inch wide gray border on it. We honed the stone and did a sandblasted reveal around it, to better set off our message and the graphics that the stakeholders wanted to convey. Here, we're thanking the veterans for their service, the men and women for their service, and we're also thanking the families, who importantly support our veterans from home. This memorial is a beautiful memorial, which I think will stand proudly and honor those veterans and your people in your community who have served. This exhibit just provides information for the board and for the fabricator on how dimensions of these stones, how we're going to finish them, the various textures and surfacing we're using, as well as the graphic presentations. This is the emblem alternative for those bottom emblems on the front of the Veterans Memorial. The six emblems alternatively could be created using, this is a colored ceramic, this is a memorial that I did about five years ago in Lisle. Bytrus Monument Company, the same fabricator we're going to be, you'll be discussing this evening, did this memorial, and these are medallions that were, are used in lieu of a black and white engraved medallion. It's a beautiful finish, it's a beautiful color, these are five years old, they're still color and finishes if the day they were installed, they don't fade, they don't crack, they're not vandalized, and they're permanently installed to the memorial. So again, it's an option for the final surfacing, final finish for this memorial. The second memorial is the Montgomery Essential Worker and First Responders Memorial. Again, similar granite, the gem mist granite, in polished and various tooled colors. Here, we're featuring two different stones, a vertical stone, which is five feet tall, seven feet wide, angular in nature, and then a horizontal pedestal stone, which is 16 inches high. It's textured with a rock, a rough rock face bottom, and then there's an engraved polished four-inch top band around it, which provides the opportunity for inscriptions that the committee has utilized to give thanks to the various members that the memorials are serving. Here, we are perpendicular to walkway, so there's really not a front or a back, there's just two fronts, if you will. At the top is the south elevation, which carries the theme of the memorial service above self. The, in the polish, that would be engraved in the polished surfacing. In the top band, features the logos of the four branches, the four police, fire paramedic, healthcare workers, and as well as educators are shown in these emblems carved into the honed granite band. The horizontal stone, again, 16 inches high, with the polished top for the inscription, provides opportunities for people to lay, oftentimes in memorials where we have some interaction, there's an opportunity for people to lay flowers, lay memorabilia for loved ones or people who have served or, who are currently serving. The opposite side, or the north side of the monument, provides a variety of silhouettes, of a variety of essential workers within the community or within the trades, and it features a quote by John F. Kennedy along the top. Carries again, the horizontal stone band, and again, giving thanks to the essential workers within the community. Another beautiful geometric and beautifully stated memorial for the members and all those who have done so much for this community over the past several years, and really for many, many years, just brought to light in the last several years. I want to specifically ask, you know, or compliment the stakeholders. While the design of these memorials is something that we do and we enjoy, the input from the stakeholders, and Christina's group in particular, you know, really took the unique message that they wanted to provide, and I think they did a great job in conveying their unique message of honor and gratitude through symbolism, graphics, and the text that they gave us to use within these memorials. So with that, I'll answer any questions that the board might have.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate it. Comments, questions from the board? Are you looking for direction from us tonight on the colored emblems?
We'll cover that.
Okay. Next. Okay. Perfect. All right. Any, nobody has anything?
No.
Looks great.
Thank you.
Yeah, looks great.
Thank you, Greg. And then, I just want to thank our staff, Christina and the stakeholders. I believe we do have a bunch of the stakeholders here with us, assuming would like to acknowledge your presence and also your participation in the project. Is, on the list that I have here, we have Robert Dabney, co-founder of Vet Park, is here this evening? All right. Jen Bernal, principal at Nicholson. Hi, Jen. And then I see Chris Kearns from the Oswego Fire Protection District and Fox Valley Marines. Thanks, Chris. I see Chief Myers is here as well. We have the Montgomery VFW folks here. Anybody else here came for that, that I didn't reference? Trying to think of who else was on this list. Okay. Perfect. Well, thank you for your input and your dedication here. I think when we started a project like this, you know, I think the vision is great, but putting that to paper to something that can live on for this generation and future generations is very hard to do, and it's a lengthy process to make sure that you get it right. So I appreciate all of your effort, and I think this will truly stand to a testament to the dedicated individuals that we have living in our community that serve us every day. So thank you. All right. Move on to the second item for separate action. We have Village Montgomery receives certificate of membership from the Greater Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce. Is, is Jeff here? Oh, there you go.
He's stuck in traffic. Can you?
You bet.
Go.
All right. Perfect. All right, next up, we have presentation of the River Run checks. And who wants to give a summary of this?
So, yeah, thanks, Mayor. We're here tonight to distribute proceeds from the River Run. We have three groups that we've been working with for some time, the Montgomery Rotary Club, the Montgomery VFW, and Hesett House. So we'll be giving, presenting checks to them, and this is our 19th annual River Run celebration, so been at it for a while, but, you know, what makes the River Run special, I think, is obviously all the people that run in it, but the fact that we donate our proceeds back to the community, and that's really what, what the River Run is all about. So there's a, just a slideshow that's going to run through, but if I could ask the VFW folks, the Hesett House folks, and the Rotary folks to come up, we'd do a presentation. If you'd join me, I'd appreciate it.
I get a lot of grief around the office for that picture. Everybody else looks like they're having fun, and I don't. But I was just trying to set my personal time there, so.
Now squeeze together like you like each other.
You can try and deposit those through an ATM machine.
We just wanted to see how long everybody would stay.
Now squeeze together like you like each other.
Christina's coming up.
You can try and deposit those through an ATM machine.
We just wanted to see how long everybody would stay.
All right, perfect. And real quick on the River Run, obviously, I ran an event this year, I try and run it as many, as often as I can. Truly a wonderful event that's, you know, put on locally, that our staff and EEI, we couldn't do it without the work from EEI and all the sponsors that dedicate their time and resources to the event. So if you've been involved with the event this year, continue to tell your neighbors and friends so we can get more participants in future years as it runs south on, along the Fox River, on the west side, and then come back on the other side. It's a beautiful run on a Saturday morning. All right. Thank you. The, jumping back up to B, I see, I see you, Jeff. Item B this evening is the Village Montgomery receives a certificate of membership from the Greater Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce. So Jeff, did you have anything to say, or did I just say it? You can come down to the microphone. That's fine. Do you want to push the button?
There we go.
All right. First of all, thank you, President Brawley, trustees. On behalf of the Greater Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank you guys for your membership and your support. We are a membership organization. Without the support of members like you, we simply wouldn't exist. This is the first year that the village has moved their membership up to our advocate level. This is our highest support. This is really important to the chamber. As we grow, as we do good things for the Village of Montgomery, partnerships like yours with the village, that things wouldn't happen. So really want to thank you guys for your support, really want to thank for staff, for everybody, everything they've done for the chamber, and honestly, just how grateful we are to have you guys as our advocate level, and really appreciate the participation and the partnership that we have. So with that said, I do want to present to the village the certificate of the chamber membership.
All right.
And again, thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Perfect. Thank you.
I came from South Carolina. I made that time.
No, sorry, I should have done that.
Oh, yeah, you gotta hold it. I'm used to holding it.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks.
Item D for separate action is a donation to the HPC. And this is, there we go. Good to see you.
Harvey, Harvey Goodwin, thank you, counsel. Village president, trustee, especially Dan Guyer, friend of mine, and guest, the opportunity, for the opportunity to be here today. The, the 2K or 5K, buddy from my motorcycle group, I think, won the 65 or 70 over. He was very proud of it. He put it all over Facebook, friend of ours. The Albright family reunion, I just wanted to share with everyone, I picked up this article from 2011. I'll just read a brief paragraph, if it's possible. "When our little village became known throughout the Chicago area for its beautiful amusement park, it was already playing an important role, sporting role, to the flourishing meatpacking industry in the Chicago Stockyards. Montgomery was once the home of the largest sheepyards in the U.S. with a capacity of 75,000 animals. In its heyday, 50 men were employed there." So later on in the article, it states, "Henry Albright Senior, who sheared sheep at the yards, won the world's sheep shearing contest at the International Amphitheater in Chicago in December of 1941. Wayne Rogers, who was the grandson of Gus Albright, worked there as a teenager. He remembers picking up the wool and stuffing in his sack for shipping. It was then shipped to the mills. Many generations of the Albright family followed in their father's footsteps, working at the sheepyards. Gus Albright was the brother to Henry. He was now well-known for operating the paddle boat on the Fox River during the River View Park era. Several of his daughters lived in the area, many of their sons, the Rogers, the Newports, the Sartors, the Mason boys, all were on the payroll at one time. These early families were the backbone of the village, and probably the VFW remembers Allen, I would assume, Allen Mason." So just a, just a quick synopsis. The Albright family reunion served many branches of the military. Most of the downlines still reside in Montgomery, in the village and surrounding areas. Many worked at local construction companies, factories. Most of the families are buried, obviously, at Riverside, Lincoln, all around here. My aunt, I call, we called her Aunt Bud, Elizabeth Albright, she became a single mom, raised a few boys alone during, due to the early passing of the kid's father. Tragedy struck a few of the family lines as well. Mentioned in the article was Wayne Rogers, son to Aunt Bud Elizabeth Albright. She was the, he had a daughter, Pam Lynchner Rogers, aged 37, retired flight attendant. Two granddaughters, Shannon and Katie, they're buried at Riverside as well. They perished on July 17th, 1996, in the explosion of TWA Flight 800 over Long Island en route to Europe. Another, this is the family on the right, these are the children. The one on the left, the photo on the left, if you can see it, that's just down the street from Pig Dog, a few doors down. That's where that photo was taken. I couldn't, I couldn't tell you which kid is which, because obviously, there's the grandkids, there's about less than a half a dozen left, and a lot of them have memory issues as they, as they're aging. One daughter, Min, had a son relocated in Minnesota, had no children. Larry Albright, which I'm never really familiar with, located to Plano area, and that family owned and operated Uncle Lair's Pizza, but is little known about him. Ruth Mason, which we have a few grandchildren here of Ruth, also raised a crew and lived with many in the area. Some of this line were Montgomery Postmaster, was Dolores Postmaster, or she just worked there? She just worked there. She, she worked there. Daughter Kathy Dabney Mason, she retired. Her husband Mike, Oswego Fire Department, Aurora Police Department retired. Patty Brooking Mason continues to work there today. Daughter Linda Comiac Mason, worked for the city and the village of Montgomery, retired. Her husband, she worked for a post office. This is synopsis, I don't know everything. Tried to tell my wife that, but I, I do own, I do know a few things. Husband, her husband Mike, Aurora Fire Department, and their son is an active fire department. Sadie Newport Albright, she's the shortest one there, she's one of the, she is the epitome of the little lady driving through the steering wheel. I remember that as a child. Also raised her children as a single parent, and Mr. Newport passed suddenly early, so she raised her boys alone. Lived on the property directly across from Pig Dog on 25, next to the cemetery, next to the Fox River. There was a house there years ago. Some volunteered for Montgomery Fire Department, they were, a lot were on the Fire Department, a lot were on the VFW board. One grandchild is a professor of business in Idaho, and the other one is a local long-term business owner here in Montgomery, Lyon Concrete Products, where I worked as a teenager. Ethel Albright also had a few daughters, Betty and Lucille Messenger, who ran our family reunion for years. Miss Penny Albright, she took the reins this year. Earl Albright had a few children, and most of the great-grandchildrens live in the area, and the granddaughter, Miss Penny, took on the reunion reins this year, along with her husband Rusty, to continue the 50-year-long tradition of the Albright family reunion. Harold Albright had a few children as well. His son Harold recently passed, he was over 90 years old, down in Kentucky, operating his motor scooter, he had an accident and killed himself. His son Harold lives in the area as well, down there. My grandmother, Bessie Albright, she's the one in the far right. Her husband Peter Frank lived on the farmland where the All Steel Plant was, located now where Center Point Properties is at, is what I understand. My grandfather, who was a night watchman for the railroad, they had 10 children, nine girls and one boy. Miss Bessie passed in 1981, and her death, we counted about 105 in that line. A lot of the family helped shear sheep, there was many stories about this. In closing, the legacy of the August and Gracie Albright and the Albright family reunion live on. As a child, I remember meeting at the, at the Big Rock Plow Grounds, folks would bring their campers and camp all weekend. We could also field a few softball teams back then. It continued and has been meeting in various locations over 50 years of existence, and we've met over the last 30 years in Elburne's Lion Clubs due to location and amenities. Each Labor Day Sunday, and in its peak, B.C., not before Christ, but before COVID, we had one, and at that time, we had attendance of about 225 folks. Last reunion, we discussed donating some funds from the Albright family reunion to the Montgomery Historical Society Commission, due to our local heritage, just, just a way to give back and bless others. Dan Guyer and Village of Montgomery, we appreciate the opportunity to give back. So now we have a check presentation, apparently.
Very awesome. All right. Would like to invite John Ammon, and, who's the president of HPC, and then Village Clerk and HPC Board Member, Debbie Buchanan, down as well. And Linda, sorry, Linda.
This isn't real, but this'll...
That's perfect. You want, you can come in, come down to the front.
Is it okay to take a photo here with the family?
Oh, yes, do that. That's fine. They look way better than we do, so.
Well, we can do it both ways.
No, that's fine, trust me.
Well, you got older ones that's hard to move.
You guys want to do that first?
I'm just quarterbacking from...
She's sleeping. She's got a sleeping baby.
You want to scream and be me?
We can get it that way, too, if they want.
No, we're fine.
We're good.
That's, the only reason why we have the big checks is to block everybody's face back here, so. End of the Albrights. All right, I'll move on to item E, and then we'll take a quick break, so folks can kind of move on. We have, next up on the agenda, we have Juan Cattano. Did I say that right? Perfect. With the 9/11 sign for the Village of Montgomery. How you doing, sir?
So, thank you so much for having us. We offer, let, what did I say, we offer? We are a small home business, if I could say that one. We do laser engraving services, we work with wood, and one of the things I laugh every day is I do the woodwork, and she does the crafting. So, one of the things that we're donating today, it is, we made, in a barrel lid, we engraved the five, five departments, including a lot of details in a plaque. So, everything is for you guys, and hope you guys enjoy it, and we have it right there, and we are about to present. Do you want to say something?
Yeah. This is, hi, my name is Luz. This is a little present for all the members of firefighters, policemen, that every day, every time, they offer kindness, and they offer their effort, their bravery, on every time that they get called. So this is a little something from our family, from our... So this is a little something from our family, from our little business, to you guys, to show you, and to thank you for every time you help us.
Amazing.
Thank you.
And that, yeah, go ahead. Would like to invite the, I know we have Chris Kearns with the Oswego Fire Protection District. We have Sugar Grove Fire Protection District Chief Brendan Moran. And then Aurora Township Fire Protection District Fire Marshal Kurt Dellis. And I see Montgomery Countryside Fire Protection District Chief Tom Myers. And then, do we have Bristol Kendall? Okay. Perfect.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, we'll just take a few-second break here. I think if there, I think we're done with the presentations on the agenda board. So if you, we won't be offended, but if you do have other things to attend to this evening, enjoy them. If you want to stay and enjoy this, and you're happy to stay as well. Call the meeting back to order. Move on to item F, for public participation this evening, which is an MEDC update from our EDC Director, Ashar Fiore. Welcome.
All that money going out, I'm so excited to be next, and in front of the audit.
But wait until those people realize you can't deposit those checks in the ATM machine.
Is that how you change it? You just hit it to the right, no more clickers, no more.
Yep, just the arrows.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I always have to be funny, right? Got to soften the crowd up a little bit. Thank you so much for letting me be here, and talking to you about the MEDC, my favorite subject, and letting you know that there's a lot that we do do. And so I want to start with seeing if this works. The arrows. Nope. Oh. See, that's better, sorry. I like blew right through that, didn't I? That's weird, okay.
Any questions?
How'd you like that? So it went backwards. It's not showing it that way. Maybe I could do it in reverse. That's weird. Sorry. Looks right. There you go, so just hit that right there. That'll go forward. Thank you. Okay. Try that again. So thank you, everybody, for being here, staying here for this presentation. The MEDC is the village's partner, and we're focused on expanding and improving the village's economic base and opportunity. This is my board, on the top, I identify the Board of Directors. And Suzette Marie, our chair, is here tonight. I won't make her stand up, but, and she is a huge blessing to our board. We also have a nice variety on our board, as you can see, from manufacturing to banking, couple trustees, do you want me to go through those? No. Okay, everybody knows who's on the board. So we have a great board, and there's been some changes, and we'll be having some additional changes, which is okay, because sometimes you get a new perspective. So what is our focus? Site selection is huge. We work with builders, developers, brokers, and address what properties are out there, what's available, who owns them, and hopefully, we find the right tenants for those sites. We also respond to RFPs. Sometimes they come from the state, sometimes they come from friends or people that I've known in the business. Basically, we are here to assist Village of Montgomery and the businesses with support and resources, whatever they need. It's important that we also keep up on the maintenance of the property and the land and inventory, not maintenance like, like Mark Wolf's job, but maintenance like keeping the data up to date. And it changes a lot, so again, it's an ongoing thing. And when we look at increasing economic impact, I look at everything from sales tax, to real estate tax, to the residents, to the ongoing diversity of the community. Is there more? Yes, there's a lot of communication, a lot of contacts. We actually have been proactively recruiting before a lease expires. The two most current ones are the Home Depot, which actually has had about eight showings. We're hoping to have that closed before the end of the year. And the Center Point Property, we do have, I think, a portion of that building. I don't know the exact square footage that the book company has, but I want to say seventy percent of the building will become available at the end of the year. So what we've been doing is talking to brokers who could possibly look at that property, redevelop it, repurpose it, or either buy or redevelop it. So again, there's a lot that goes on, hopefully, ahead of time, so we don't have any vacancies. Working with labor and employers on labor has been huge. It, it continues, and it continues to continue, you know? I get calls on wages, what do we need to do to retain our employees? Probably on a weekly basis, I ask, I get asked for new wage rates. And so again, it's not a Montgomery issue, it's not even a Kendall or Kane County issue, it's a national issue. So hopefully, we can find ways to keep our residents employed, have people come here. I've even thought about maybe using demographic profiles to get people to, like, for us to tap into a region that maybe has a higher unemployment rate, that maybe we could bring them to Montgomery. Just an idea, but I think we're at a point now where we have to come up with some ideas to help the employers get the staff that they need to maintain their workload. So lots of times, and over the years, and this year particularly, I was asked if the work that I do can be measured. And if so, how would you measure it? Would you look at the size of the projects? Would you look at the investment? Would you look at the tax base? What about the quality or the quantity of the jobs? There's also the whole result-driven issue, which includes easements and ownership and infrastructure that gets added to the project. Those are things that is gained by the project, just like recently the Frehlke Farm. We have a few other deals that are in the process that could improve the infrastructure. Today, we had a long call, Zoom call, with the railroad on numerous sites that quite a lot of investment is being done and put in the railroad. In fact, we were called hot, and I don't mean hot like me and Sonia, hot like the Village of Montgomery's hot. I had to use that, it's true. So then, people also had talked about effort and how it's measured. So I did do some studying and found that there are some EDC offices that use metrics. And most of them do have a dedicated staff, at least full-time or part-time, three-quarters. At least Aurora had a person that worked seventy-five percent of the time, just running numbers and calculating numbers. They also have software programs. What I think is important, or what's been told to me over the years, is the fact that we have targeted goals. And the, the village has given us targeted goals throughout the years. And they're not, they're not based on numbers. They're based on issues that come to fruition and things that are needed as they come by. So it's not like I have a roadmap, but I remember when I first started, the importance of Douglas Road and Montgomery Road. There's so many things that the village has wanted and has reached for. And again, I look at name recognition, which is huge. I mean, there was a time, people, I would tell people that I worked for Montgomery, and they'd say, Alabama? And I'd say, no, but now, everybody knows who Montgomery is. I mean, Cushman and Wakefield, you name it, everyone's calling. So that's, that's progress. I still have people saying, woe are we with the Caterpillar and the surrounding sites. But it's been the best thing that's ever happened to us, and I've said that since day one. We have a lot of great companies coming in there. We have a lot of money going into the infrastructure, the electric, the railroad, even the buildings. Montgomery Business Park once was just vacant, two-hundred-and-something acres. And, and now, I'm lucky I have three parcels left. I have several people bidding on the same parcels, so I'm not quite sure who's actually going to get it. So again, this to me is progress. We have new investors and new partnerships on a, on a weekly basis. We also have speculative construction that we've never had before. Then some people say, okay, well, what are the factors that matter? And so, does it matter how big the community is? What about your budget? How about staff? And when and how do you count these projects? I guess I'm not so into all the numbers. I'm more concerned about addressing the needs of the village. I like to focus on the strengths that the community has. I'm proud that the leadership removes barriers. We focus on matching our assets to the sectors in the community that basically nobody else has. We stand above different communities. I don't think anybody in this region can compare themselves to Montgomery. And it's all about generating conversations. How many people do you talk to? How many people do you reach out to? How many conversations do you have? And obviously, trust and established relationships are important, and that's probably part of what I call my secret sauce. As far as job creation, we talked about, there's really more jobs than there are people to fill them. You know, everyone knows that the medical group is hoping to go anywhere from twelve-hundred employees to four-thousand. Again, that's going to depend on their ability to get the labor in there, the machines working, and numerous other things, including access to the rail and the electric load. Tangents, almost ready to start shipping. Today, I found out they do about fifteen-hundred cars a day. I did ask when we increase, you know, the number of cars that the railroad adds, how does it affect the community? And basically, it really does not. They still are guided by certain laws, as far as how long the train can run, and so on and so forth. So again, we're in a good place, it's not a bad thing, it's a great thing. It gets those trucks off the road. We will continue to work with growth industries. Everyone knows Performance Foods has added a nice kitchen this year. Carl Buttig is still needing about seventy-five employees, they're, I think they're past six-hundred. We have a lot of growing industries, and we do have high-paying jobs with benefits, and that continues to grow. Over the last couple of weeks, I've had a lot of calls about machine operators and different positions that are available, even accounting. I had a lot of calls for accounting, which is, again, those are higher-paying jobs that, you know, we'd like to keep our residents employed and not hitting the highway. So I talk a lot about increased investment and the value. Our work is a community effort, so it's really hard to say, you know, these are my numbers, and this is what I do. That part is really not important to me, because there's not anything that I can do without all of you. You can help me, or you can hurt me. And that being said, it doesn't matter how many conversations I count. If something blocks the project, doesn't matter how much effort goes into it. So I've learned to give you what you want. New construction, new money, leasehold improvements. You know, even our facade improvements along Douglas Road are amazing when I look at it today. A lot of effort's been done there. We have continued interest in our land, and we have multiple offers on property and land, which is, it's a good thing, but at the same time, we have to be very careful, because I can't have three or four people fighting for the same parcel. And I want to be sure that they understand that, you know, they can trust us. And although we might like some deals better than the other, I'd rather we at least put that out on the table for them. This is where I just like to add some photos, just for the impact. I mentioned the objectives here, some new ideas that have come forward with some of the new board members. The MEDC, not only do we bring in a tenant, which then lowers our rent, we also are creating a virtual office, so we can have a camera and use the boardroom for a more efficient, professional-looking, Zoom-ready, you know? professional-looking, Zoom-ready, you know, conference room. And you see that sign in the middle? That sign has been, all the owners and all the business owners in that center wanted that sign for the last 15 years. And so, the new owner, Ryan Burke, put that up, and everybody has their name on there. And they might be coming back to the board for some kind of a thing that floats, you know, but I told him to call you, Sonya. That's down the road. Those are, I just posted the pictures along Douglas. I kind of liked the wannabe IKEA colors, but that is where it's half-written, you know, or half-done. But the sign and everything just looks so much better. And actually, their menu has also gotten better. If you're into gyro's or beef sandwiches, they've improved, and they're pretty good. Here's where all the action is. So we have people, we already have a contract on the sharing property. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done, but there's a bill to suit in there. It's not in a TIF, so that'll be all new money. Same with the Brummel and the Conti property. That's all vacant land that will be improved with infrastructure, water, and sewer. There's been some retail opportunities, and there's more in the wings, many of which I can't really talk about till we get a little closer. But there's a few deals there, and I laugh on the Gas and Wash. I think I might have mentioned it to Sonya or staff, but I didn't bring it up to the trustees yet. The gentlemen from the Gas and Wash still want that old site. Just saying. I'm looking at you, Steve. Okay, so let's move on. Inside, the building to the right is the Building H, which is just one aisle of the old Caterpillar site, which is, I think it's beautiful. It could one day be a clean room. They do have a 10-year lease. That just shows you how they cleaned the floors and polished them and so on. I put the Shale property on there because it's a reminder to me that when the property was appraised, it was appraised for $925 to $1 million, and the gentleman who purchased it paid $2.78 million. He's probably going to put another million in it. So what that says is, it's a great place to invest in Montgomery, and that's huge. International Process Plants is a company that I really just started getting calls from in the last few weeks. They said that they purchased the, I keep wanting to say VFW, but I know that's wrong, VVF building, and they said they purchased it a year ago. And they actually have a tenant from Brazil that they're trying to bring to Montgomery. And so, VVF is still renting back about 100,000 square feet, and they're still hiring. They're the ones who called for machine operators. But this company also wants to increase the footage there and add another 30,000. So you take the, you take that property and you add another 30,000 square-foot building, and if you want, you would be, the building would be completely surrounded by Montgomery. So if you wanted to, just saying, you could annex them once they do that. Just a thought. New money. I put Gray's Mill on there as well. I thought they would be here tonight. They're looking to expand and add more to the restaurant. We're also having our holiday party there, so I hope that you'll be there December 8th. And then, the other thing I wanted to talk about was repeat business and what that does for the community. So Direct Steel, I don't know if you remember Rosemary, she was kind of a little rough around the edges during a project, and yet she came back and said, Shar, I want to find some more property in Montgomery, you know? So what does that tell you? That staff is awesome. And it's just great when people want to come back because good news travels a lot, a lot. Well, actually, bad news travels faster, but good news still travels. So that was Direct Steel. JLL, that woman, we have a lady that, Kate, she's the one who showed the Home Depot property eight or nine times. She's brought her father, I mean, she's brought everybody in her family. She's looked at about every parcel that we've had, and right now, she's the one who is holding the contract for the sharing property. So when people get committed to a community, they want to move forward, and I think that says a lot about us. So here's my fun secret sauce. Established contacts, reputation, available land, that's all part of our success. I think we've also, the MEDC has been very fortunate. Not only did I have an established career and know a lot of people, but I've had people call me and say, I have to do business with the MEDC. That's what I was told. And that means we have credibility. And there are some companies that might not even know who Charlene or the MEDC is, but they definitely know they want to work with an economic development agency. And I could probably give you a list of names, and Carl Buttig was one of them. So again, it shows that the community and the Village is committed to economic development. I've added to this line, I've talked about the We Care environment and the Get It Done environment. I think the Village of Montgomery has proved that over the last five years at least. I think that we share resources and we work together, and I know that I've enjoyed working with staff, and I've always had a secret place in my heart for all the trustees who work so hard and read their packets and care about the community. So I thank you for that. This is just about talking about the future. What are some of the things that the Village would like to see? What are the things that I think that we should continue? I think that it's important that we repurpose any properties that are outdated from the 50s or 60s to help keep the properties moving. Increased exposure at the national level, I think we've done that, but I think it's great to continue doing that, working with the business community and recruiting and keeping staff. And again, working with industrial and rail users. And that's all that I have. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for EDC?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
There is a clicker here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Item G for public participation is the Lauterbach &amp; Amon presentation of our FY 2020 audit. Welcome.
Thank you.
You want to just click on this one?
Yes.
And Director Maluski, did you have anything to add before they get started?
Thank you, President Brawley. So state law requires that the Village publish within six months of the close of the fiscal year, the financial statements in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted by the United States and audited by an independent firm of certified public accountants. The Village's financial statements have been audited by Lauterbach &amp; Amon. The independent auditor concluded, based on the audit, that there is reasonable basis for rendering an unmodified opinion on the Village's financial statements for fiscal year ending April 30th of 2022, and are fairly presented in conformity with GAAP. Ms. Jen Martenson, a principal from Lauterbach &amp; Amon, is here to present the financial statements to the Village Board.
Okay, good evening.
Welcome.
I'm Jen Martenson with Lauterbach &amp; Amon. As Jennifer said, I am here to present the comprehensive annual financial report, as well as the audit results for the Village of Montgomery for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2022. I do want to start by thanking Jennifer for all of her hard work during the audit process, especially towards the end there and making sure we could get everything wrapped up and moving forward smoothly. So we appreciate all of your hard work. Thank you. So as Jennifer said, state statute requires that an audit be completed each fiscal year by an independent auditor. And really, the goal of that audit is for us, as your auditors, to be able to provide an opinion on the financial statements presented this evening. Again, as she said, we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean audit opinion. That is the highest opinion that we can issue, and it really just means that the financial statements presented this evening are materially correct or do in fact accurately represent the financial position of the Village. So great start, clean audit opinion for the fiscal year again. I believe everybody has the audit report handy in front of them, so I'm going to talk through the larger document first and just note some of the key highlights throughout. So there's three major sections there, your introductory section, your financial section, and your statistical section. Within the introductory section, two key areas to highlight would be the transmittal letter. That's going to be on page three, and that's just an introduction to the audit report and to the Village overall. So really, a non-financial introduction to the audit. Additionally, you'll find on page 14, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting that was awarded to the Village again for fiscal year 2021. It's a very prestigious award. It is the highest financial award that the Village is able to apply for. So congratulations for that again for fiscal year 2021. And then, we have also been, we're going to submit the 2022 audit as well, and do anticipate the Village will receive that again. The key area to note in the next section is your MDNA or Management's Discussion and Analysis, and that is on page 21. And I would highly suggest the Board spend their time in that section of the report. I know it's a rather large document, can seem a little bit daunting at first glance. It's about 200 pages, just over. So this section really summarizes everything. I like to say it's the executive summary of your report. It's about 13 pages or so, and it's really just going to highlight those key changes for the year. Again, financial highlights and really good discussion there of all of the financial information to follow, but in narrative form. So if you read just those 13 pages, you will have a full, comprehensive understanding of this entire document. Just to touch really briefly on the highlights overall for the year. Overall, for the Village's governmental funds, there was an increase of approximately 17 million specifically related mostly to that issuance of bonds, with ending fund balance of 32 million, of which approximately 4.7 million is what would be unrestricted or unassigned for use for the Village. The general fund or the Village's operating fund did see an increase this year of approximately 345,000, with ending fund balance of 5.3 million. The last piece I want to point out in that section is the budgetary comparison schedules. So those are going to start on page 116 in detail, just again, for the Board to know where those pages are so you can review your budget versus actual for the year. And then finally, the last section, that statistical section, you've probably heard me say in the past, I think this is probably the coolest part of the audit report here, if there is one, right? That section is on page 182, and it's really cool. You'll see 10 years of trend information for a variety of topics for the Village. So fund balances over the years, property taxes, major revenues and expenditures. So 10 years of information all in one place for the Board to be able to review in the back there. There was a smaller document as well, the management letter. There were no new comments this year, just some updates to prior recommendations. And again, the three that are included in this packet for you are really more of an awareness. They aren't really any deficiencies or weaknesses that we found with the Village. It was just an awareness to the Board that there were three funds with deficit fund balance for the year, as well as a new standard. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board has issued a new pronouncement related to leases. We'll work with Jennifer to make sure that gets implemented properly next year when it is required, but just so the Board is aware that if there are any material leases during our review, they will be presented differently in the financial statements going forward. And then finally, just to summarize there for the Board as well, any of the funds that did come in over budget for the year. Finally, I would be required to communicate to the Board this evening if we had any disagreements during the audit, any difficulties with management, anything that we felt the Board should know in our review of internal control, and there is nothing to report on that this evening. So overall, very smooth process. Thank you so much, Jennifer. We have that clean audit opinion and that Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting again for the Village. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board might have.
Awesome. Questions for staff or the auditor? Just to save me from having to thumb through this in a few minutes, the, at the end of fiscal year, at the end of fiscal year '22, the general fund surplus was how much?
345,000.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Thanks for coming.
Okay. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
All right. Item H for public participation is the tax levy announcement. Director Maluski?
Thank you, President Brawley. So state statute requires that the Village announce its estimated and proposed 2022 property tax levy at least 20 days prior to the passage of the property tax ordinance. The property tax ordinance is scheduled for approval at the December 12th Village Board meeting in advance of the December 27th filing deadline. The Illinois Department of Revenue announced the property tax extension limitation levy CPI for 2022 to be 5% for the levy year. As such, staff is recommending that the Village announce an estimated and proposed levy of $2,584,740. The estimated property tax includes new construction, including new construction, is an additional $245,727, or 10.5% above the 2021 extension amount of $2,337,471. While staff, while the figure staff is recommending is the maximum allowed under the PTEL, it is important to mention that the Village Board may also announce a lesser rate, should that be the desire. Included in the packet are the 10-year graphs and numbers of equalized assessed value, tax rate, and resulting tax levy. I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Perfect. Thank you. Comments or questions? So that is, it's just the announcement of that today? I know that, there's some printed information here.
There's no discussion on this that seemed incorrect.
I mean, it's the announcement of it under public comments. There's nothing that would prohibit us from talking about it if you wanted to. But we don't have, we're not taking action or anything.
You're not taking action. I mean, staff would look for discussion from you as far as the amount of the levy, so we can bring the ordinance back and have the public hearing. We'd bring back what you're looking for. So of the $245,000 increase that we're, you know, showing there, basically, half of that is due to new growth. So half of that, you know, we would take no matter what because new growth. The other half is the 5% PTEL. So, and looking at that would be, you know, we actually tell you the average per household, that'd be an increase of about $14.75 per household to take the 5% increase. So again, the last year, the Board elected to take the PTEL increase. In the past, we have frozen it. It's not an all or nothing. We can, I mean, you can say zero, you can take the full 5%, or somewhere in
So, just a little bit of history on this, I think, just so everybody remembers, and I'm sure it was in the memo there. With the exception of last year, we have not chosen to seek that PTEL amount for a number of years. I don't know exactly how many.
Seven, I believe.
Yeah. And last year was the first year. We sort of, or maybe I explicitly said publicly that at the end of this year, we don't know right now what next year's budget is going to look like, what the world is going to look like six months from now when we approve our next budget. But the state requires that we approve a levy next month before the beginning of the year without really having a budget or anything like that in place. So, last year at this time, I had said we levy the full PTEL amount plus the new growth with the promise to our residents that at the end of fiscal year, if that money was not needed, you know, then we'll return that back via the rebate. So, I do want to have that as part of a conversation on the November 28th meeting to discuss the property tax rebate and what this board wants to do and sees as the future of that next year because of what I just stated. But then, the other, the flip side of that is how does the board feel about the PTEL for this year? I think the 5% PTEL is probably much higher than what we've, what the PTEL has been before recently, right?
Yeah, I mean, because it's always CPI or 5%, whichever is less. This is the first time that the CPI has exceeded the 5%. Last year, though, the increase you took was 1.4%.
And if it was more along those lines, I would be very okay with levying that amount, knowing that whatever we don't need, we can give back. But as we've all been watching, the cost of literally everything, eggs, bread, everything in our homes right now, increasing dramatically. And we've seen, we've seen that actually on our revenue side here in the village, with our sales tax dollars continuing to grow, people are literally being priced out of their grocery store. So, I don't think that I would, I'm going to go back on what I said. I don't think that I'd be in a position to want us to levy that full 5% next year, but I would like to see us settle on some amount above zero.
I'm willing to do, I'm willing to do the new construction aspect. I've always voted no, including last year, on the PTEL or the CIP. I will vote no on the PTEL and the CIP again this year. I will not vote for a tax increase on existing homes unless they're, unless they aren't fully assessed. I will not vote for it.
Okay. Everyone else?
I mean, I think with the economic downturn that we're headed towards, you know, I'm kind of in support of freezing it again. Last year, I was in full support of, but again, times have changed radically within the last year. So, I mean, I think that holding it, again, might not be the worst thing for our residents, considering we're all getting hit at every turn.
Yeah, we're in a different economic climate this year for sure. Last year, I was okay increasing it, but this year, it's just, it's totally different. You know, you made a valid point that everything's going up. Was the cost of everything goes up, so does our sales tax revenue. And I know we're trying to diversify somewhat in case if we do lose a major retailer in the village, but I do not think this is the year to increase it. Yeah, I just don't think it is. I was hoping that we would come up with a plan and the economy would stay stable like it was a year ago, and, you know, rates were low and inflation was low. But with the way it is now, I do not want to increase on people that are having a hard enough time. I know it's just $14 on average a year, but still, it's, I think it's just sending the wrong message. I think we need to evaluate this again next year, and hopefully, things are a little different, and maybe we could take a, take a little increase next year too. But yeah, I'm not in favor this year.
Seeing some head nodding.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with what has been said. I think that with us being in a good financial position, that we're very lucky that we're able to make the decision and not have to do it. So, I would be in favor, let's just hold it again this year. Or hold it again. Yeah, hold it this year.
Basically, don't recapture.
I know we went forward with it last year, and, you know, I was in favor of that because I was concerned that people can get very accustomed to not having anything raised, you know, over a period of time. And if we need that at some point, I want, I just don't want us to get stuck where, you know, we have to do something drastic. So, my answer is I'm good. I'm good with just holding it. I'm going off on a tangent.
No, it's perfect. Sorry, Mr. Bowman?
No, I think last year's, last year's decision was a smart decision because this has a compounding effect, and with the board head of holding that line for seven years, making that adjustment at least last year, you know, that's going to have an effect for years moving forward. And as long as we're not in a dire situation, we're not in a position where we're having to cut services or not provide services to the residents at all, then it's a responsible thing to do, just to hold the levy where it's at and not impose any new taxes.
I want to add-
That's exactly what I was trying to say. Thank you.
I'd like to add something to that, though, because the village board members are put in a position where we can either vote for that or vote against it. And we've consistently, for the most part, have voted against raising the consumer, the CIP or the PTEL or whatever it's called. And the reason that we're able to do that is because staff does a kick-ass job. And we're hard on you guys, and I especially will beat on people when things come in over budget and things. But you guys do one hell of a job, and it allows us to keep taxes where they are. So, I'm going to say on my behalf, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I was going to summarize, but I'm not saying anything after that.
Not only keeping the taxes where they are, but keeping the level of services high too. That's important.
Well, and the one thing I was going to say, I really appreciate the board looking at things, I guess, understanding the precedent that was set, but on an annual basis. This is the position that we're in today. Last year, we could do something, this year, we can't, because I think that's going to come back in other conversations next year or the next meeting and stuff like that. So, thank you. Okay. You've got clear direction.
Yes, so we will have the public hearing at the next meeting, first reading of the ordinance, and then adoption of the ordinance at the December 12th meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the last item for public participation is the public comment. Has anybody been waiting around for 90 minutes to make a public comment to this board? If so, I apologize before you speak. Usually, we do that first, but we had a lot of public participation before that. So, anybody wishing to address the board that's not on the agenda anywhere else? All right, did anybody submit any written questions, or is anybody on Zoom that would like to participate?
We did not have any written questions submitted.
Okay.
If they were on Zoom, I think they fell asleep.
All right, hearing none. We'll move on from public participation. I would like to do the consent and then take five minutes, if you don't mind. The consent agenda, I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the October 24th Village Board Meeting, Executive Session Minutes of October 24th, Accounts Payable through November 14th, Accounts Receivable for October of 2022, the Building Report for October of 2022, Water Production Report for October of 2022, and the village's scheduled meetings for 2023. So, moved.
Second.
Moved it in second? Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
All right, that carries, and we'll take five minutes.
Real five minutes this time? Come on, I read it. I'm not late. I got to go to work tomorrow.
I'm what?
I'm just saying. If they hurry, we're going back to the village.
Hey.
You know what I think? I think I like ball cap Steve better than suit Steve.
I bought a new suit, and I promise you, I'm going to wear it soon and just freak you guys out.
Skittles or something.
Matt?
I think it also probably helps just have that vacation.
Matt?
Yeah, Matt.
Just tap the gavel.
Who's that guy he's talking to? Oh, he looks so familiar, like I shouldn't know who he is.
Matt Bowman.
See, I didn't know it was working.
Matt.
Bowman. Come on.
Come on, I gotta sleep in late tomorrow. Let's get going.
You gotta sleep in late.
Christina.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Items for separate action, the first one is approval of letter of commitment to participate in the Greenest Region Compact EV Readiness Program. Director App?
I got it.
Sorry, by that, I meant.
I'm on this one. If you recall, in 2018, we joined the Greenest Region Compact, you know, which kind of focuses on sustainability. The EV Readiness Program is kind of similar to the Soul Smart Program that we previously participated in. Basically, it would, we would join a cohort of our surrounding communities that are in the program and try and raise awareness and engagement regarding the EV program, charging stations. We would look at sort of our zoning, our parking requirements, our permitting process, you know, hold price on public forums to get the residents engaged. And through that, we would look to earn gold, silver, bronze status. Like I said, it's very similar to the Soul Smart Program. They have two groups coming up. One's going to be in December, one in June. So, if you guys agree, then we would have President Rowley sign this letter, and we would probably look to join the June group. And it's about a six to nine month, I think.
And so, at a high level, by dedicating, when we signed on to the GRC, you know, we loosely said that we support or we are in support of these things that are great for the history of the world. And one of those was solar panels. So, we became a Soul Smart community, which is more so, more than community outreach. It's ensuring that we're ready for what was about to come, which turned out to be, I don't know how many, but how many solar panels have we permitted and installed in our community in the last three years?
No, probably like 50.
50. So, this is the next initiative that I spoke with Edith last week from the Mayor's Caucus. Their next initiative is this EV Readiness Program, which, I guess my only clarification is, this is focusing on community charging locations, like community stations, not like a charging station in your house.
It does actually look at both.
Okay. Perfect.
Yeah.
It's coming, and I applaud the board for being ready for it.
Would you like a motion?
You unmuted, so yeah.
I move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, item B is approval of a letter of intent for a new Vector Combination Sewer Cleaner. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Rowley. At a previous board meeting, when discussing cost increase on an existing Public Works Department vehicle, the board talked about the ability to purchase future vehicles and equipment outside of our typical processes. Along with that discussion, the board also suggested to staff to look at future purchases to discuss the importance of those purchases and determine if they are necessary or those items can be delayed. As staff continues to look into those future purchases, discussions with Standard Equipment Company started to take place regarding the need for the Public Works Department to purchase a Vector Combination Sewer Cleaning Truck to allow the village to perform in-house services that have typically been contracted and outsourced. Sanitary and storm sewer maintenance, along with capability of hydroexcavating, are a few of the major tasks that will be completed if this purchase were to be approved. The need for this type of truck has been present for many years. However, due to the size of the existing Public Works building, this truck has not been an option to add to the village's fleet. This piece of equipment must be stored indoors during the winter months to avoid freezing issues with components due to the amount of water that is used in this type of application. With the construction of the new Public Works building expected to be completed in May of '23, the department, the department will be in a position to accommodate the new combination truck. Due to standard equipment's size and buying power with multiple truck manufacturers, Standard Equipment has a slotted Peterbilt model truck available for purchase with a scheduled build date of Vector components in September of 2023. This would be the preferred vehicle brand by the department, by the department after the switch was made from a previous manufacturer to Peterbilt in 2017. Staff is requesting tonight that the village board approve the letter of intent for this Peterbilt truck to allow Standard Equipment to designate this truck to the Village of Montgomery. This letter of intent will allow for the build to be completed with the exact specifications of the Village of Montgomery's standards and not the standard built unit in which it was designed to be. The cost estimate for this truck is $565,860. There's currently projected to be a surplus in the Vehicle Reserve Fund of $600,000 in fiscal year 2024, in which this vehicle would be purchased using those funds. A couple of things that I wanted to mention and add regarding this vehicle. So, when we talk about standard equipment's buying power, what that relates to is standard equipment is one of the larger players in the market. And so, what they do is they plug in different manufacturers' cab chassis into their build slots allotted with Vector. And so, what happened was this, this is what they call their standard build. So, this vehicle would typically be built with certain amenities and components, and then it would be placed on their lot for retail purposes and sold. So, this allows us to jump in an existing order that's already out there in order us to exceed and advance the timeline of us getting this type of vehicle. So, that is the basis of what I have to share. If there's anything I can answer, I'm happy to do that at this time.
Thank you. Go ahead, I see questions.
So, this is a service that was previously contracted out for the village. Two things, what, what is the difference of our contract, like say, our annual contract to have this type of service provided to the village? And if it was a contracted service, is it just the equipment, or is there additional staff or training that's going to be certifications required to operate?
It's a great question. So, this particular piece of equipment is multifaceted. So, in order to put numbers to it, there'd be a large multitude of different things to look at. Some tasks that can be completed with this vehicle are tasks that are conducted in-house, but could be done extremely more efficiently with this type of vehicle. So, like I mentioned earlier, sanitary storm sewer preventative maintenance are items that we've been lacking in due to those costs that come with contracted services. So, the village started working on a subregional, or I'm sorry, a sub-basin map of our sanitary system and started a more proactive approach of cleaning. So, again, I can put those numbers together of what those types of programs look like and comparative to what will be available to us with the purchase of this truck, but I don't, I don't have all those figures at this time.
I have a question. Because I know that we were subbing some of these items out, right? And with the hydroexcavation, it's going to save labor. Eventually, this vehicle is going to pay for itself over, from no longer having to sub certain things out and having to pay those dollars, but also, it's a labor cost savings as well, correct?
Correct. There are definite labor savings. And so, just to put it in perspective, too, the Public Works Department does have a vacuum trailer that we utilize, nowhere near as efficient as this type of vehicle. It has some major limitations to it, but it was an advancement from what we had previous. And to put it in a perspective, there's numerous communities substantially smaller than the Village of Montgomery that have this type of equipment. It's really a need and a necessity for the department. And again, it's really been limited- uh, the Public Works Department does have a vacuum trailer that we utilize. Nowhere near as efficient as, as this type of, of vehicle. Um, it has some major limitations to it, but it was an advancement from what we had previous. And to put it in a perspective, there's, um, numerous communities, um, substantially smaller than the Village of Montgomery that, that have this type of equipment. It's, it's really a, a need and a necessity for the department. Um, and again, it's really been limited, um, our ability to purchase this due to, to our facility size.
Because we couldn't park it inside.
Correct.
If I remember correctly, when, before we bought that hydro excavator trailer that Mark referenced, this was the thing to purchase at the time, but we just simply didn't have the space to, to store this. And I know I, I had, and I mentioned to Mark earlier, I saw one of these up close and personal when I toured the South Elgin Public Works Facility. And their Public Works Director told me that when we built our building, which this happened three years ago, he said, "When you build your building, you'll be buying one of these trucks." Because you have to have one of these to do your job efficiently. You have to have one, but if you can't keep it inside, you can't have one. So, I mean, so it, it is something that I think that we, we're moving into that level now where we need to become more efficient at what we're doing. With all of the continued growth on the West Side and actually leaf pickup, you know, is expanding as I was leaf vacuuming my yard last night in the dark. That, you know, we need to spread our resources around a little bit and this'll help us become more efficient at what we do.
And, and one thing that I have to comment on, and Mark and I talked about this before, before the meeting, and maybe, maybe play in the role of Tom Battinger just a little bit. And not, not asking about competitive bid, which you should comment on, um, why this isn't like a waiver of bid to purchase this, but the question is, you know, last meeting, we were hit with an increase on a vehicle that we needed in order to perform the current level of service, perform it. This is a different use to increase efficiencies at our Public Works, right? Now that we have the space, that's gonna open up the door to a lot of things that we need to buy, right? In a great new facility that we'll have next year. But are we in a position right now where we, and this is a question for the board, obviously staff, you know, Mark and Jeff support the, the ask. Are we in a position right now to be making this kind of purchase? To do something that would increase efficiencies of our Public Works staff at a time where we're seeing cost increase on equipment that we need to perform a, a baseline level of service?
If I heard correctly though, in 2024, fiscal year 2024, when this will be due, we are projected to have a $600,000 surplus in our vehicle replacement program.
Right, but this vehicle was, what was not and is not in that diverse program. There just happens to be a surplus.
I'm, I'm okay. I'm okay because the, the reason I asked the question is about no longer subbing things out, the, the cost savings and the labor savings and things. My next question was going to be, we have a $565,000 vehicle. How do we prevent it from becoming a $620,000 vehicle?
So that's a great point and something I want to touch on with the letter of intent. So by authorizing the letter of intent, what we're doing is we're, um, basically creating a hold on the, uh, current cab chassis that's gonna be available with that time slot for the build date. What happens then is the actual PO won't be issued until our fiscal year of May 1. So if in that time from now till May 1, there are, you know, circumstances like we've seen before where there are, uh, additional fees or surcharges that are passed on by the manufacturer and the village wants to withdraw, um, we're able to do that. We have no obligation to continue the order. Um, so that's something to keep in, uh, in, in mind through this process. Uh, the other thing that, that President Brawley touched on that I'd like to add is, uh, when he talked about, um, this is a non-waiver of bid. So the vehicle would actually be purchased through our Sourcewell, uh, membership, which we have done numerous times for different vehicles, uh, and equipment, as standard equipment is a Sourcewell, uh, manager. So that's how this, this build would, uh, I'm sorry, this purchase would, would move forward.
And do we currently, I guess the other question that's been thrown out, do we currently outsource any, anything, any of the work that this truck would do? Or do we do it in-house but with our trailer?
We do some of the work, again, very limited, uh, to what we can do in-house, uh, with the trailer comparative to the truck unit. Outsourcing, yes, definitely. Any sanitary, uh, preventative cleaning, uh, any blockages that take place, uh, we're hiring contractors. Uh, preventive maintenance for the lift stations, um, are done typically. Right now, once a year, due to the cost, we would up that to twice a year, um, if we had the piece of equipment in-house. So again, just to give some examples of, of how we would expand.
We would, we would take the maintenance on the lift stations and bring it in-house?
Correct.
And do it with this and do it twice a year instead of subbing it once a year?
Correct.
Okay. Do you think between now and then, if there's a cost decrease in anything, you think they'll lower the price for us?
I can't, I can't comment on that. I'd love to say yes, but.
And it's a two-way street.
Sure.
Perfect. Any other questions? And I appreciate it. I don't mean to imply in any way that I'm against the purchase. Need the board to, to have all that information.
Yeah, I would like to say some, I, uh, I watched about, well, half a dozen videos today on this particular piece of equipment.
Solid.
And having used that vac trailer that the village has now, um, is, is very cumbersome. This piece of equipment is state of the art. Um, you can't overlook the fact of safety, um, for the employees performing the tasks. The thing has so many safety features on it and it's, it's got the boom that, uh, retracts and extends. So you don't have to do it manually and also will extend downward. So you don't have to pull a hose and, and manually. It's, uh, it's, it's a very nice piece of equipment. Um, there's a lot of uses, uh, that we can use this for, uh, throughout the village. Um, I mean, just simple things, um, you know, B-box repairs, it just, they just go so much quicker with a vac. And then when you're digging, like a main break, after there's utilities in a way like, um, electric or gas or something like that, you're not risking, you know, putting a backhoe through one of those and, and creating a, uh, you know, a high-risk situation. We've needed this for many years. We needed it years ago. You're right, the problem is we had no place to store it because it would freeze, uh, in the winter. It's, uh, yeah, it's a purchase that, that I've always had on, you know, my list of things to purchase for, uh, for the village and for the Public Works Department. So with that, I'll make.
This is ready to go, right? I mean, if you have a main break, this is ready to go. You don't have to get a truck to go hook up to the trailer to drag it out there. And this is ready to go.
Right.
You hop in it and you go and someone's there.
Right, and it's one main operation if you want it to be. Um, it's, it's got the remote. It's got the remote, you stand right there. It's like playing a video game.
This'll help with our water loss as well as we move forward towards, because if you have a main break, that's water loss, correct?
Right.
So that would cut down on the response time to be able to fix a main break.
Right, and this is larger than a trailer as a higher capacity. So with a trailer, if you did anything, you would like do a job and you have to go back and dump it, do a job and go back and dump it. It was impossible to, to really use it for a, a water main break because it just didn't have the capacity. You spend more time running back and forth dumping the thing than just go ahead and, and digging it, so.
I, I have another question. Most of our main breaks take place during winter, right? Cause of the freeze thaw or what, whatever. If this is inside and say we have a main break, I know sometimes main breaks are, you, you might be out there for eight, nine, 10 hours. If this truck goes out there, are we worried about whatever water is in this truck freezing?
So there are, um, you know, there are things that we'll, we'll have to take into, uh, consideration when we're out, uh, performing services. But one of the big things is when we went through the spec to get us to a point where we've gotten our pricing, uh, we made sure that we, um, incorporated recirculating pumps, um, on this type of equipment. So that way we could have this piece of equipment out. Again, it doesn't do you any good if you shut the key off, uh, the obvious, but as long as that vehicle's out running, um, on the site, during extreme temperatures, uh, typically we're, we're in good shape. There's other preventative measures we can take as well as far as RV antifreeze and some different things like that, so.
Yeah, same technology fire department uses on a, on a pumper. They recycle the water, you know, return the water and, uh, it doesn't freeze, so.
Was that, did you have anything else to add?
There's a motion, a motion to approve.
Perfect. Any other discussion?
Yeah, a statement. What's impressive is that we can have a conversation about holding a levy and the same night talk about the possibility of purchasing a half a million dollar piece of equipment. That's impressive. So kudos to, to the village.
Maybe we should give a presentation on the VERF someday. On years ago, put, you know, the history of the VERF, see? That'll be, uh, maybe a senior luncheon thing. All right. Uh, we've had a motion in a second. Is there, uh, any other discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Okay, Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Nick Carriess five zero, thank you. All right, uh, we're already at item C. Uh, Resolution, uh, 2022-021. Authorization, authorizing the use of the 2022, 2023 MFT for snow removal materials. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. The village continues to purchase road salt, uh, for our annual winter operations through CMS, uh, which we've done for many years. As part of the procurement process, due to the village using MFT funds, uh, we will need, uh, the authorization, for use of, uh, motorfield tax, uh, for the purchase of the, uh, roadway salt. Included in the packet is the necessary documentation to be submitted to IDOT, uh, for review. After review and approval from IDOT, uh, the village will have the ability, uh, to purchase road salt, uh, which has already been, um, the contracted amount has already been completed for this year, uh, and will be able to move forward. Keep in mind that we're in a good position, um, even still though this year with, uh, overflow salt from last year. So we're not in a, a major rush, but definitely need to get this item, uh, completed. So any questions? I'm happy to answer those.
How, uh, how does our unit cost per ton, uh, compare with previous years? Just like everything else, has salt gone up?
Uh, it has gone up. Um, it went up a little bit beyond our, uh, budgeted amount as far as per ton pricing. Um, but we have some buffer built in there as far as our quantity goes, so we'll be able to adjust appropriately, um, and still be in a good position. Um, I believe last year we were at roughly $56 per ton. I think we're at 77 and some change this year, so a bit of an increase.
Yeah.
I, wasn't it, cup, two or three years ago it was more than this?
Yes.
It was close to 90.
Like 90 or something?
Before.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Um, on a somewhat related topic, um, and me just coming off a plane from South Carolina, is it gonna snow tonight?
We'll, we'll talk about that later in the snow plan.
6:00 AM. The answer is no.
6:00 AM.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? This is item C. Okay, go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Nick Carriess five zero, thanks. Item D, PSA in the amount of 201, 788, uh, for the 2023 water main improvements. Uh, this is for the, uh, it's a PSA with EEI, right? For the, um, it doesn't say that in there, but it's for the engineering or inspections. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Brawley. Uh, as the village is actively working to reduce non-revenue water throughout the village's water distribution system, uh, areas of water main replacement have been identified as a key component of this plan. The water main replacements are, uh, one of the large items identified in the water reduction plan, uh, and will continue for multiple years. Uh, this PSA roughly covers about $4 million worth of water main replacement for design. Um, the objective is that we will, uh, move forward with construction project, projects, uh, as funds are available moving forward. But this would encompass, um, a large portion of the design work. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I have one.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Um, on the map, uh, that's attached to this, showing some, uh, locations in Boulder Hill. Uh, Circle Drive East and Hampton Road. On Marnell, between Circle Drive East and Hampton Road, uh, the original developer put stubs in, but never made that connection. So there are basically dead end mains in there. Um, is the intent to run that main between those two roads? Are you gonna abandon those stub outs?
Um, that's something that we can definitely identify through the design process to look at those. Obviously, we want to eliminate any stubs or complete the connections, uh, that are there. So, uh, those are items we'll cover, uh, through that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Marnell and Circle Drive East, that's actually a cross here, so.
Okay. Random question. Um, Crestwood Court and Birchwood Court, those are not included in this? Are those just private service lines that come off of this? I'm just looking at the map here.
Those maybe, or the, um, I'd have to jog my memory, but I think those might have been included too. The village did some looping projects, um, in our last, in the Boulder Hill project. Um, and I can't recall if those were included at those times.
It's not super critical on.
They were, they were looped.
Yeah, I believe those were looped.
Got it. So those have already been accomplished.
Correct.
And the, the $4 million that's, that could be covered by this, once we get funding to do the $4 million, is just a portion of the estimated, how many? It was 30.
34 million.
34 million that we need to do in the next eight to 10 years before we take Lake Michigan water. Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Carriess, five zero, thanks. All right, item D, award a contract to, uh, Sewer Spreading, uh, for the 2023 to 2025 water treatment residuals, removal and disposal. It costs not to exceed $48.22 a dried ton in year one. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. As part of the operations and maintenance of the village's lime softening treatment, uh, water treatment plant, uh, a byproduct is produced during the treatment process that needs to be disposed of. Uh, this byproduct is excavated, uh, in, from the settling lagoons, placed on a drying bed, typically done twice a year, hauled away and spread on farm fields to avoid, uh, this product from being landfilled. Uh, on October 25th, two contractors submitted, uh, completed documents to the village, um, in regards to an RFP that was for this work. Uh, since then, those documents have been reviewed. A conclusion of that review is, uh, recommending to the Village Board the approval of contract to Stewart Spreading, uh, for a base term of three years with the ability, uh, for staff to extend the term of the contract for two one can, one year, two consecutive one-year terms. Um, the costs related to perform this work, uh, in the contract are determined based on the amount of lime solids, uh, hauled from the site each fiscal year. Uh, the proposed cost, uh, for removing the lime solids is $48.22 per dried ton. And to give perspective, uh, for budgeting purposes, the average amount hauled away over the last, uh, for the last two years has been 1,000 tons per year on average. So at $42, or $48, excuse me, and 22 cents, uh, per dried ton and on average of 1,000, uh, we are at the not to exceed of $48,222. And the current fiscal year 23 budget for this item is $65,000. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Motion to approve. Second.
Question?
Motion is second. No discussion, go ahead.
Uh, Director Wolf, the previous contract, because we're in the final year of it, was that the same setup where we had three years and then two extensions?
Um, I'd have to look back. I don't believe that we had the, uh, I believe it was structured differently, um, in years past. I think it was a one-year contract with the ability to extend two additional years, if I recall correct.
And this, uh, this rate that we have for this first year, how does that compare to what we have been paying?
Um, I do not recall the dollar amount for the current. Do you, Tom?
Let's see, uh, currently, uh, we're paying roughly 39.70 to 39.90 per dried ton.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
All right, Nick Carriess, thank you. All right, item F is a waiver of bid and approval of a purchase, uh, in Peter Truist Monument Company. The amount of 134,002.75 for the Montgomery Park Improvements, uh, Granite Memorials. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. So as the board obviously was, uh, presented with the final designs tonight by, uh, Greg Sagan from Signature Designs, uh, this correlates, if you recall, the discussion that was had, uh, during the final design presentation at a previous board meeting, um, there was discussion about the need to move forward, um, with the purchase of these, uh, monuments at a sooner date in order to hit our timeline. Um, so that's what's being presented tonight to the board after, um, the stakeholders have had their way in and we've completed that process. And one thing to add that's not included in the board packet with the cost estimate is there's an additional $2,200 alternate option, which was to add those colored medallions that Greg had went over tonight. Um, so if there's any questions or if the board, uh, would like to move forward with that, um, we can do that. Uh, we don't need that answer immediate tonight, uh, but it is something that we'll need before placing the order, uh, which I believe Greg said was December 7th or 12th in that timeframe.
Does staff have, I mean, what is Greg recommending, one versus the other or no?
I don't, I don't think he had.
He just gave the option if you like the color instead of the, the black and white. Looks like it'd be $2,200.
Yeah, so my only question is, and I, I don't recall and I, I don't have a good feel for the proximity of the two monuments. of the two monuments. So you'd have the, the services in, you know, a colorized medallion, but then you'd still have the, like, fire, you know, EMS and that would not be, right?
I would imagine that they can do it in any fashion that the board would like.
That'd be my only comment, is how are those two gonna look? If this one's colorized, that one's not colorized, but.
Yeah. And again, I don't think that decision has to be made tonight. I just wanted to bring that up, that it is an option and something that we can discuss further.
I have two questions and a comment. My first question is the budgeted, or the actual cost is significantly less than the budgeted amount. I'm assuming the budgeted amount shown is for the entire project?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. My second question, and more of concern to me is I under, we're doing a waiver of bids, which means that we're not sending it out to bid. We're not, are you feeling that we're getting value?
So the reason for the waiver of bid is mostly due to the fact that this is a sole source situation where there are not many manufacturers that can basically get this type of stone. I know Greg had went over and I apologize, I don't recall. But basically, this, this stone is typically sourced from overseas, whereas this Peter Truist company has the ability to source it somewhat locally out of, I believe it was Pennsylvania. So that was one of the reasons, the major reasons why Greg had selected this, this particular stone and this particular company moving forward. So it's not really a matter of looking at it for comparative cost as it is the sourcing issue.
And you've had, Matt, you've had dealings with Peter Truist before and have, have never had any sort of.
None better in the industry.
And my, my comment is I'm okay with the additional 2,200.
And I, I was gonna say, I would probably go with the standard engraved look. I think you have, this monument is nine feet tall. You've got the sleek, dark gray, almost black granite with, you know, polished look. And I think with that engraved, it just has a very, I think ceremonial elegant tone to it. I, I think the colored ceramic is nice in some points. And on these stones, families will use them to put maybe a portrait, a picture or something like that. And that, that's nice and it's personal. But on some elements, I think it can almost lend, and especially depending on how it's manufactured, almost like a cartoonish look to it. And I think it may take away from, from that, that, that reverence and that somber effect that the whole monument could have.
Okay, I'll change my comment to, I agree with what trustee Bowman said.
Any additional comments? This is a waiver of bids, we do need five votes in the affirmative?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
It all hinges upon me, right? Yes.
You would think so, but I get to vote, so.
Another question.
Five zero.
One more question as far as schedule. We're, the reason that we're ordering this material now is so that this can be in place? I can't remember, this will be in place for the fest, correct?
That's the objective.
That's the timeline that we're shooting for? Okay.
Barring any, anything unforeseen?
So this is a locked-in price, we don't have to worry? Okay.
That's, that's my understanding correct.
All right, item G, recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission of PZC 2022-016, screening variation, this is for CarMax, Building C at the grid. And then the Enacting Ordinance 1984 is item H on the agenda, and that is first reading. Director Abt?
Thank you, President Brody. As you may recall, we've got CarMax Auctions that's looking at going in or is in the process of locating over at the grid. As part of their development, they're putting in a refuse area that needs to be enclosed per our code. They are proposing to do chain link fencing with slating around that refuse area. And so therefore, they're requesting a variation. Since this is an existing parking area, they are looking to avoid having to put in the foundation improvements that would be needed for the required masonry wall. In addition to that, they are requesting a waiver from the landscaping requirement immediately around the refuse area, again, because it's located within an existing parking lot. They are adding some additional landscaping along that north property line of where the outdoor storage will be. That'll help screen the area some more. So again, we had the public hearing last, last week for this and the PZC recommended approval of it with the condition that the trash enclosure must, must be removed once the CarMax use ceases on the site.
Question, do they, they already have a special use to operate there?
Yes, as part of the PUD agreement that we came to, we designated that area as an outdoor storage area for parking of vehicles and trucks. And so that special use is already granted for that designated area. So the storage of the vehicles is approved by that.
Got it. Do we anticipate that there would be any increase in EAV?
I don't know, they're, they're putting in a modular office, so I don't know how much of improvement that is gonna be considered to, to raise the EAV on that.
Perfect. Okay.
I attended the village, or not the village board, I attended the planning commission meeting because I didn't think I was gonna be here tonight. And so the whole time that this, this was being discussed, I'm thinking to myself, what is the benefit to the village of Montgomery with this? There is no sales tax. There is, they, you know, they want to come in, they want to use a parking lot. There's no sales tax benefit to the village of Montgomery. They want to get out of any sort of landscape requirement. My other question is if, if Reich Brothers, if, if there's a tenant that wants to expand and use more building or whatever and they need that parking lot, are they, they stuck for five years with CarMax using it as a parking lot?
I don't know the particulars on their lease. I know they do have a five-year lease for that particular area. So I'm sure there are some contingencies in there, but with the, the level of company that CarMax is, I would imagine that they're honoring their five-year agreement with them. If somebody does need additional parking, the Reich Brothers are prepared to add additional parking in areas out there and they do have room to accommodate parking areas for trucks if there's additional areas that are needed for other businesses locating in there.
So what we're getting, is the, the village getting any tax dollars from this?
I don't think we'll be getting specifically any tax dollars from this. We will be getting the revenue from their auction permits based on the amendment that we did a few months ago.
And so is it a permit per auction? I'm assuming it's not a permit per vehicle, is it?
No, it's per auction day.
Which is relatively pretty minor, right?
It's a $75 fee and they're planning on having one auction a month, or one auction a week is what they told me. It could be more than that, but that's about their average.
How are the cars getting to and from the grid?
They will be bringing in trucks, so trucks will come in and be delivering the vehicles. They'll be parked within the fenced-in area. And then also, any of the purchasers that are coming in can bring in their trucks to pick up the vehicles they're, they're purchasing through the auction and, and remove them from the site.
One question.
So we don't get any tax dollars from it and we get additional truck traffic?
To win-win, really. But what we're approving tonight is just a variance for the screening around the garbage area, right? So the, they're within their use for this property to use it, right? So if we don't approve this tonight, the only thing it's gonna do is make them put up a brick.
Enclosure, yes.
Enclosure, thank you, around the garbage cans.
I guess one, one, I see one benefit here. This would, would or has eliminated the, the other storage that was occurring on this pad, right?
Yes. Reich Brothers exercised their ability to relocate the trucking parking that was already there. So they are now parking in the rear of the property, back behind Building H. So that is where the truck parking is moved to within the site. And that is another one of the outdoor storage areas that was dedicated as part of the special use and PUD.
And I do appreciate that. It was not, it was, yeah, it did not create the visual that I think anybody wanted off of 31. What, what are the, and then we're, we're really getting into the special use, but I just am asking questions. The vehicles that they're parking here, are these like automobiles or?
So as it was explained to me, because they're having such a large influx of vehicles that are being sold to them, not just as trade-ins, but also with their option to just go in and sell your car to CarMax. They have a large quantity of these cars coming in and they don't have the capacity at their retail center locations to hold all of those cars. So they're looking for that kind of interim fix where they can keep those cars in a lot and run their auction, dealership auctions. So it's not like the public can come in and do these, bid on these cars. It's, it's for other dealerships. So through that auction site, so this frees up space for them to keep the vehicles they want to be selling on their retails, on their retail sites and gives them a place to put those vehicles that they're gonna be selling through auction versus selling on their sites. So.
Is there going to be security?
It's cars, trucks, but it's not like oversized vehicles. It's not, you know, semis or anything like that.
Is, is there going to be security here at night? Or are we gonna have to worry about the catalytic converter?
No, they're gonna be putting in fencing along with concrete jersey barriers around it. It will be monitored, so they will be keeping close tabs on that area.
So the landscaping screening that we're talking about is just around their dumpster? Or is it the entire use along the eastern side of their property?
So the variance is for just the landscaping that's required around dumpster enclosure. They are putting some additional landscaping along that north side of the outdoor storage area to add some screening to that area. It's kind of as compensation for not being able to do landscaping within the outdoor storage areas self. As part of the PUD and annexation agreement, we required that Reich Brothers put in the landscaping all along that eastern line to screen it from Route 31. They failed to get it done by quarter three, so we are looking at a spring installation for that landscaping along that. That's still required as part of the PUDs that will also be helping to screen that particular area.
Got it. Yeah, 'cause it says on here that the landscaping will be installed no later than September 31st, 2022. Okay. Which didn't happen. Yeah. Doesn't exist. Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, so the first item is the recommendation of planning commission, the recommendation only. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
This is to accept the fact that they made a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, call the roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Okay, Mike Carriese, five zero. Item H is the Enacting Ordinance 1984. We'll add this to item for separate action at the next meeting or a future meeting. If you can find out more about that landscaping before then, that would be great. All right, item I this evening is recommendation of PZC of 018, an amendment to the special use to allow for the expansion and relocation of outdoor dining and a banquet hall at Gray's Mill Estate at 211 North River Street. Director Abt?
Yes, thank you, President Brody. We have Gray's Mill here before you again. As you may recall, a year ago, they went through this process as they chose to relocate the banquet hall expansion to the side of the building rather than going back towards the river as they had originally intended to do. As they've been working through the process and deciding what to do, we've made some changes and they're proposing to do a slightly larger expansion there on the south side of the building. And they're also choosing to go with pretty much an all steel and glass structure for this banquet hall. The elevations and the site plan that was brought before you before that was approved by the special use showed a kind of a masonry front along River Street and then the glass enclosure and, and with the retractable roof and everything, was on the backside of that addition facing the river. So with these elevation changes and the increase in the footprint of the building, they need to amend that special use yet again, so that's what we have before you tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hold their public hearing and recommended approval of it. Some concerns that were brought up were related to parking on this site. The VFW brought up that with the expansion of the addition over the creek, that that would be negating the cross-access that they were granted to go through their parking lot to, to access that small area that they own that's a kind of part of the VFW parking lot. So there was some question about whether or not, how that impacts parking. So if they do have a large event, we don't necessarily have the on-street parking to be able to accommodate that sort of overflow parking. As part of the original special use, the board had required them to enter into a parking agreement, perhaps with Lyons Metal, to be able to accommodate overflow parking for these larger events. The planning commission did not include that as part of their recommendation as a condition, but it is certainly something that the board can consider that can add in there. But they did recommend approval. Obviously, it's subject to a few conditions, including the village engineer's approval of the engineering plans, the addition of bicycle parking that's required over there, as well as staff approval of the landscape plan.
Thank you.
I have a question. So in this drawing, they have the, it's connected to the building, to the current structure.
Yes.
Are you walking underneath that structure to get into the current doorway?
Yes.
Okay, so this, it's gonna be like, you're gonna go under this structure to get in?
So they'll have the, the stairs down to that, that lower level, so you'll be able to get into Danny Boy's like you, you currently are. And then they'll also be installing, pardon me, an ADA ramp that will come from the parking lot, so you have that ADA accessibility to be able to get down to the Danny Boy's entrance. And then from there, they have the elevator, so you can get up to the second floor to get into the banquet area. But there will be some extra, they do have the deck walkway around it. So there will be some stairs that'll provide access to that as well, that'll allow you access to the banquet hall.
Question, is the, there's a building and then there's an outdoor, there's the, I don't know what you call it, the retractable area?
The retractable area, mm-hmm.
Are both of these the same project being built at the same time?
Yes.
So it's not like we're getting the retractable area, but without the addition?
Correct.
It's gonna have both?
Yes.
Is the retractable area a three-season area or is that meant to be used? Yeah, okay, you don't have to come down. I figured out after I invited you down that you were doing force.
It's intended to be able to be used year-round.
Got it. And so HVAC, lighting, electrical would all be figured out?
Yeah. Is, is this something, is the venue only for weddings? Or when there aren't weddings, can residents, are they gonna have it set up for, for various things?
They're gonna have it for banquets, year-round banquets, it's just not for weddings, it's for banquets during the week or conventions, you know, convention, that, meetings, or meetings, that's what I'm talking about.
But if Doug and I, if Doug wants to buy me a burger or something and we go over there, can we sit out there and eat a burger?
They'll be on the backside of the dome, right now, plan is to.
You wanna come down, just 'cause I know we do have some.